Okay, I'll let you stop. I don't read either. I'm guilty. I don't know. You took the time to go through it. I'm tired. Next time, you're gonna run around and kill. I don't remember that one off in here. I, uh, I didn't, I didn't. I have my job, I might have to, uh, read instructions.
What do you want?
She just got something right there.
Oh, no thanks. Okay, give me that.
What do they call it?
I need to stop, uh, speak too well. Yeah, be, I'm sorry. This, this is Harold, I've got an issue on Zoom. I know, that's me, I'm Zooming on. Yes, I'm running a pro, just tell her, I ran into a problem on Zoom and I'm gonna drive over there to, you know, I'll be there as soon as I can for the meeting. Thank you, honey. Bye. Dan.
I know the job classification went a little bit over, but we'd like to start in about one minute, council members, one minute.
Can we put it on your desk?
Okay.
Tell you, I've always told people to be ready for people to criticize you. That's gotta flip side, so most people may prefer that. Appearance of improv. So, I mean, I don't think legally speaking, you're gonna be able to come in and say.
Hey, we're gonna start in thirty seconds, council.
Okay. All right. Well, we're quiet here.
Okay, we, we have Harold Griffin on Zoom. Lisa Lee presenting from Indianapolis on Zoom. With prayer, and then someone will lead the pledge. They stand for prayer.
We can defy, if we're in our states or America, to the other religious hands, one nation, one God, and if it is all, if they are indeed, and yes, it's.
I notified the council, it may be reflected on the latest itinerary or not. Gonna go next to the approval of the January minutes, council members, have you had a opportunity to receive and read over those? And if so, I entertain a motion. Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those same. Been passed unanimously. Uh, now we're gonna move to a public hearing on the Henry County, uh, Newcastle Henry County Library, a resolution, uh, who is here to present? You look familiar.
My name is Steve Murphy, I'm the attorney for the library. Uh, we had a lengthy discussion at last month's meeting, we won't repeat that, but we have Winnie Logan here, if you have any questions about the project, we have Baker Tilly here, there were some good questions about the financials last time, and they can follow up if you have any questions on them, but we are asking the council to do two things, first of all, open and conduct a public hearing, we noticed a public hearing to give people an opportunity from the public to, uh, ask any questions, make any comments about the additional appropriation that we are requesting, and then after the public hearing is concluded, to consider the resolution which you have in front of you, which would allow us to move forward with the financing of this construction project.
Joel, you'll need to maybe direct this, this is the first public hearing I've overseen for a few years.
Okay.
Uh, we're gonna call this public hearing to consider the twenty twenty-two oh-two oh-four oh-two oh-oh-two Resolution of Henry County Council approving the Newcastle Henry County Public Library issuance of one or more series of bonds and appropriation of such bond proceeds, and I'm gonna take your direction as how we'd like to proceed.
Sure. I think you could open it up now for anyone that would like to address the council regarding, uh, the proposed bond issuance and project.
Uh, anyone, uh, in the council or in the public that would like to address, first we'll take, uh, pro, uh, speaking for, and then, uh, after that opportunity is given, anyone that would like to speak otherwise would be given an opportunity, but if you would, if you'd please come up to the lectern and speak. Anyone speaking for or against, uh, this resolution on geo-bonds for the library expansion that was described in fairly detailed at our last meeting in January, with a lot of Q and A. Anyone? Going? I have had more experience at auctioneering and auctions than I have, so going, going, once, twice. Comments closed. Direct me what next.
Now you can consider the resolution, which is Resolution twenty, twenty twenty-two zero-two twenty-four oh-two, uh, which would be to approve, uh, the library issued bonds in the amount not to exceed ten million, six hundred thousand plus investment earnings, uh, for the, uh, expansion and renovation project as described at the last meeting.
Right, and we had questions and answers how this would affect the, uh, Henry County General Fund, and my recollection is there was no impact on the county budget or finances.
Or tax rates.
Or tax rates, which is very important to our citizens, okay. Council members, have you had an opportunity to read over this Resolution number oh-two from two thousand twenty-two, and do you have any questions?
After reviewing the documents and hearing the presentation last month, it sounds like an impressive project, to invest in our local library is a worthy endeavor, I'm excited to see what they do with all their developments.
Other comments before we open it up, and this is a situation where we have to have each person voting yea or nay, and that's documented. Any other comments before we either take a motion? I hear none. Uh, I don't know, Joel, if you want to conduct the roll call, but this particular document has those council members voting for and those voting against, which is like some of our PC votes.
Yeah, I can do it.
Okay, thank you. I do know their names, I just would like to be more legal.
So?
Yes, did you? Okay. Yes, I would take a motion to approve this twenty twenty-two dash oh-two dash twenty-four dash oh-two Resolution affecting bonds for the, uh, Henry County Newcastle Library bonds.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and any more discussion or further discussion? If not, Joel, would you read the roll?
Uh, Chad Mallicoat?
Aye.
Susan Hoon? Betsy Mills?
Aye.
Kenan Gray?
Aye.
Harold Griffin? Oh, Harold's not on, okay. He was on for a second. Okay.
It so often happens on Zoom.
Uh, Peggy Stephendell?
Yay.
Kyle Allen?
Aye.
Passed by vote of six-two-zero.
Okay, and if he reconnects, we could, we can, we can pick him up. Thank you. Motion passes six-zero, thank you, counselor. Next, we have EDC update by Mr. Corey Murphy.
Time's ticking. Uh, thank you, council, I'd be happy to answer any questions, uh, that you may have, but I wanna, um, specifically talk to you about a document, I know you have like several documents in front of you, but this one has Taylor, Taylor Seifker-Williams, dated January twenty-sixth. Not looking for any action today, uh, from the council, but I wanna plant a seed on a project that I think is worthy of, uh, pursuit, and that project is a comprehensive signage location plan to identify county and community destinations and preferred vehicular and bicycle routes within the area. Think of places that you visit in your car on vacation, and the associated signage that those places may have to direct you to points of interest. So in our county, examples would include Summit Lake State Park, the wineries, so you've got Belgian Horse and Harmony, it'd be Hoosier Gym, it could be the downtown business district, so on and so forth. I presented this to the Tourism Commission yesterday, and so the Tourism Commission is the seven-member body that is created to collect and manage the innkeeper's tax, and the Economic Development Corporation has a contract with the Tourism Commission to help manage tourism marketing and development, and they endorse this as a, as a concept. Ultimately, it'd come down to funding, in terms of how to fund the plan, and then if we fund a plan, we probably ought to think about funding the actual signs. Not looking for any action today, just simply wanna put this out there, and then, uh, maybe Kenan and I and Commissioner Plummer could have a discussion and come back at a future meeting. I think this would be helpful to both residents and visitors alike, so think welcome to Henry County signs on the major entrances, think about in Middletown and Knightstown, we work with those respective leaders, and they come up with signage that works for them, but also jives, if I could use the word jive, jives with the county signs as well. This is not a new idea, um, my predecessor about thirteen years ago talked about this, and for whatever reason, it ran out of steam, but I think it's important for us to, to consider. So there's my dropping of the seeds or planting of the seeds with you. Later on in your agenda, you're gonna hear about the Boarshead Project, we've got Lisa Lee on the Zoom, and you've got Jason Simler in the audience, and then the Redevelopment Commission Attorney Jim Milliken. In regards to the Boarshead matter, there's no action requested today, it's simply the introduction of the bond ordinance for further discussion, and then, uh, setting it up for a vote at your March meeting. Uh, Mr. Chairman, do you want me to talk about the Economic Development Commission?
While you're up here, yes, I just wanted to add a note that when we went through that, uh, gargantuan task in twenty nineteen on stellar, that wayfaring signage was a key, uh, component in the recommendations, if we had actually received the twenty-two million, was a high priority project, after Ball State talked to us, that the most underutilized asset we have in the county that we've not tapped is tourism, because they felt like for our county that we had a lot of, uh, assets relating to tourism and sites that are maybe not advertised enough, have promoted enough, so wayfaring signs was a key component that we emphasized, and unfortunately, we didn't get the twenty-two million, and I don't begrudge Marshall County because they deserved it, we thought we deserved it, it was a priority, and it probably still is.
Any other comments or questions from council members? So the next item on your itinerary is the appointment to the Economic Development Commission. The Economic Development Commission is different than the organization that I work for, Economic Development Commission is a, is recognized in statute, um, as a, a, a body that reviews specific financing, um, arrangements, and in this case, we will be looking at the, uh, the, the Boarshead incentive. The Economic Development Commission, um, holds the public hearing on this matter, and then makes a recommendation to the county council. The Economic Development Commission is com, bless you, is comprised of three individuals, all appointed by the county commissioners, but is a recommendation from, so one member is a recommendation from the county commissioners, that person is Josh Estill. It is a recommendation from this body, and currently, it is Kara Huffman. I always pause because I, I know her as Kara Taylor, but Kara Huffman, and then the city council has, uh, a recommendation, and that is Mike Broyles. Uh, two meetings ago, the county commissioners appointed Josh and Mike, so the Economic Development Commission has a majority and can do their work as associated with the Boarshead Project, but no time like the present for you all to, uh, make your selection, it does not have to be Kara, it doesn't, she is willing to serve.
I will say that they were given the information that you'd shared, I forwarded it to them in a memo, I think dated February fourth, Corey, where you had indicated Kara had served, uh, five years ago, I think, or twenty-seventeen, so it must not be a group that meets very regularly or is terribly time-consuming, and this relates to the Boarshead Project, is that correct primarily currently?
Currently, the need for the EDC is the Boarshead Project, the most recent need for the EDC was the micronutrients project, and then prior to that, the EDC met, uh, for the original Boarshead Project. Uh, the city has an EDC as well, and so they meet from time to time, and I happen to serve on, on the, on the, on the city Economic Development Commission.
Corey, I read your email regarding, uh, Kara, and all three people you mentioned, Josh and Mike as well, are that, they're all valued community members and great leaders, is it your recommendation that we reappoint Kara?
Yes.
I will simply say, after I sent the, your February fourth notation that she was willing, I received today a, another name from another council member, and I don't know if that person would like to share that, and you said it's not a town to mouth that we approved today because you can't go about the business, but it would be preferred if we acted today, is what I heard. The person who shared that with me, would you like to share that name?
Yeah, I spoke with Rosalind Ritchie today, she lives in the northern part of the county, and she'd be happy to serve on this, um, commission as well, she has been really involved in local politics and is an excellent researcher, and I think she'd really be an asset as well. Thanks, Kenan.
So we have two people that have been forwarded and named who are willing, is it the desire of the council to vote on one of these two today?
I make a motion that we appoint Rosalind Ritchie to the Economic Development Commission.
It's been moved in seconded, uh, Rosalind Ritchie, uh, discussion.
I, I guess my concern is, is I, I can't really make a judgment because I don't know this person at all, um, so the normal process when we appoint someone to a committee is they supply detailed information as to why, what they bring, their background, and such, so I think it'll be very difficult, whereas some others may not know Kara Huffman, I about did the same thing, Corey, um, as well as I do, so, you know, I think if, I think it would be very difficult for me, I mean, I have to vote no, because I don't know her, so, and she may be the best thing ever, but it's, you know, I have to be fair to myself, and since I don't know her, that's gonna be very difficult for me to make a vote, so if there's additional, is, would she happen to be here tonight by chance?
I don't believe so. Uh, I, I don't have background information as far as like a mini resume like we are accustomed to for either one of these individuals, um, I know, I know of them, I know Kara because she's presented in front of the, uh, wastewater management board, which I've been on, otherwise, I, I don't know a lot about either one, and if, but there is a motion on the floor, but we're still open for discussion, Corey?
So, not knowing that there was another person interested, um, in the interest of neutrality, I'll withdraw my recommendation, however, in the interest of full disclosure, Kara is, already has the public hearing date on her calendar and can attend.
What's that date?
It is March seventeenth at noon.
A week before our next meeting.
Um, so I, I, I just wanted you to know that, there's, there's no funny business going on, Kara serves until she is replaced, you're in your full right to replace her, but the timetable in getting the notices to the newspaper and the documents ready, we've already identified St. Patrick's Day at noon as the time that works for Josh, Mike, and Kara.
Okay. Thank you.
There you go.
Any other discussion, because we still have an active motion on, on the floor, so, any other discussion?
Yes, um, I'm uncomfortable with, I think, voting on this today, um, I know of Rosalind by reputation, and she's a deeply intelligent woman, and I know, I've heard lots of things about her research skills, we also have Kara who's very experienced and has been recommended, um, I, I don't know that we need to rush this.
I think if we don't vote today, we miss our opportunity as, to have a representative on this commission, March seventeenth.
Any other discussion? I have no say unless I break a tie, so.
If I understand Kara will be, i- unless we change our mind today, she would still sit on that meeting.
It's a default decision.
Yes.
Yeah, if we don't take a vote, then Kara represents us on the seventeenth.
Yes, I'm open to, right now, we're gonna have to either withdraw the motion or we're gonna have to go through with a motion that's been seconded, uh, which is a motion for Rosie Ritchie, Rosalind Ritchie, um, all, all those in favor? Yeah. Yeah, you still have the note.
So if we have representation by default, we could hypothetically hear from them, both of them in our next meeting and.
Yes.
Make an informed decision.
But right now, we have a motion that we have to vote on.
Can I ask another question of Corey before we do, please?
Yes, absolutely.
So, will there be follow-up meetings, or is this more than likely going to be the deciding factor meeting, uh, on St. Patrick's Day?
In regard, in, in regards to the procedural timetable as described, the Economic Development Commission comes together on that day to hold a public hearing, listen to the public comment, and make a recommendation to the county council on whether this should be approved or not, so this is the opportunity in the current timetable, um, will this body meet again? I hope so, but there's nothing else in the pipeline right now.
Thank you. And we can't have a workstation, which we've been known to do quite frequently the last two years, any other discussion, because otherwise, we need to take a vote on the motion that's still active on the floor. Karen? Hey, Harold? Oh. Harold? Well, the only discussion is we have two names, neither one do we have, uh, resumes for, they were Rosie Ritchie and Kara Huffman. It was for EDC, uh, group of three, uh, the commissioners have already appointed Josh Estill, the city has appointed. Mike Broyles, and the council is supposed to, uh, fulfill and, uh, recommend a third, there's a motion on the floor for, uh, that made by Susan, uh, Rosie Ritchie, it was seconded by Peg, and it's, it's still open on the floor, it's still inactively. Okay, that is perfectly fine, that was my summation, the best I could remember, okay, there is still a motion on the floor unless it's withdrawn, that has to be addressed, and I would ask for you to, at the request of our auditor, our secretary, to do a roll call vote.
Kyle? Ted?
Yes.
Harold, Harold, you have a say, okay, Kenan?
Uh, I'm only here to break a tie as a chair, so go with somebody else first.
No.
Susan? Yes.
No. There is no tie, is there a quorum vote? Well, if I vote one way, it's gonna be a tie, and still not gonna be a quorum. And the threes noes?
You have three noes, two yeses.
Yeah, I, my vote is superfluous. My vote is superfluous. We won't get a quorum.
Can I entertain that we would invite both women to our next meeting and here, I, I realize that you're taking action before that, I realize you're meeting on the seventeenth, but for the purpose of us actually making a decision, an informed decision, can we invite both to our next meeting?
We could do that, or like we usually do, have, ask them to give a, a mini resume. No, I did not say that, I said I. I said I I'll vote yes, and it's a three-three tie. Yeah, I'm only here, I'm only here to break a tie, is what I'm saying, according to Roberts. And I knew if I voted either way, it wouldn't be a quorum. It wouldn't be a majority vote. So you can put it down three-three, but I didn't break a tie. So what we can do, Betsy, I think, and anybody here, correct me if I'm wrong. I've been known to be wrong sometime in the past, is to invite a mini resume like we had for most appointments that we did in January.
I would welcome that. I just, I want, I like data, you guys know that.
So then Kara will
Kara is for the March 17th, unless we have a special work session for this and other topics.
May I? May I talk?
Yes, we're done with the vote.
So I'm going to ask Mr. Harvey. Is, can Kara participate and vote?
She serves until she's replaced.
Okay.
She's not yet been replaced.
Okay.
If she's replaced, yes.
If she's replaced, yeah.
Anything else? And I'm glad that you can have your meeting with Kara on the 17th, unless we have a work session, in which case we really can't take a vote at a work session. So, yeah, you'll hear from somebody from us on the 24th of March. Thank you, Corey. Next on the agenda, we have ordinance 2022-2, an ordinance established on a non-reverting cumulative weights and measures fund. And that's for the purpose of collecting fines for violators, which we've not had in the past.
I have a question. So we haven't done this in the past. Have the commissioners set guidelines for?
There is an ordinance that governs
They're just going to enact it now, or they haven't implemented it before?
My understanding is it hasn't been enforced in the past. And similar with other departments and enforcement ordinances, this just creates a non-reverting fund for whatever fines and fees might be collected at some point.
So I have additional questions. Is this going to operate similar to the park fund that was created, where we have some oversight in the council and the budget sessions or such to look at that? Or is it completely independent, such as?
Yeah.
Plus he has police authorities from the state of Indiana to make fines. He's actually designated as a police
It's a non-reverting fund that will only be used to fund his needs. It would potentially fund a new vehicle for him. Yeah, it's, it's a non-reverting fund.
That's okay by the state?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, he has, he actually has the authority to arrest. He'll never exercise that, but he has the authority as a law enforcement officer. Previously, I think people just kind of thumb their nose and go, you don't have any power to enforce this. Well, the state legislature says he does.
I guess the question I have
We passed our ordinance that allowed for the fining of, because right now, when he goes and red tags a gas station, he has no teeth. They told that they pull the tag off, he has no teeth. So that's what the modification of this ordinance and this fund and the process is so that we can start finding people for not doing the things that they are supposed to do.
And state statutes.
And, and state statute allows it, yes.
And it says he can have it all back. I mean, it's all his
It's a non-reverting fund.
As he wants.
Yep. Well, as he wants within oversight of
That's my question, and that was what I was asking. Who oversees the funds and who decides how the money
The commissioners oversees the weights and measures, so the commissioners will be overseeing. I mean, obviously, he's not going to get to go out and buy a new house.
Yeah, I mean, this specifies the uses for support of the weights and measures department.
Yeah, it is in support of the weights and measures.
Any other questions from the council? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Move to pass.
Second.
Who, who made the first motion? Susan, second, okay. Any further discussion? Now that I know Harold's over here, I'll look to the south. No further discussion. All those in favor of passing ordinance number 2022-2 on the non-reverting measure for weights and measures, say aye.
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 Post saying? Passes, thank you. Introduction of ordinance for Boarshead Project. Mr. Murphy again.
So I'll introduce the project, and then I'll invite Lisa to speak. And then we also have the county's financial advisor, Jason Simler from Baker Tilly here as well. I handed you out the schedules at your station on Baker Tilly Letterhead. But essentially, in terms of the timetable on this, it was publicly introduced at your January council meeting. We received permission to, to move forward in the approval process. The project consists of approximately $126 million investment. It is a plant expansion of the Boarshead Processing Facility, approximately 136,000 square feet, 120 new jobs by June of 2024, 19-plus dollar an hour wage. That wage excludes benefits. The incentive recommendation is an Economic Development Commission bond. It's the same structure as the initial 2014 project. There was an education session held on February 8th that was broadcast. So on the county's YouTube channel, you can listen to the audio. That goes into great detail on the structure. The county is not at any risk in the issuance of these bonds. The county is simply the conduit. If the taxpayer doesn't pay their taxes, then the bond payments aren't made, and there's nowhere to go. Can't come here and ask for any other source of revenue. It is essentially a, what I like to describe as a self-funding incentive. In terms of the process, there is an ordinance before you. We're not requesting action tonight or today. It is fun to say today, by the way. But we will be requesting a vote at your March 24th meeting. I'm looking for the timetable to give you a preview of other things to come. So February 8th, we had the educational session. February 24th, that's today, county council introduces the bond ordinance. We'll make sure that there is public notice in the newspapers for the Economic Development Commission, which will meet on March 17th at noon. The redevelopment commission is meeting on March 24th at noon. The redevelopment commission's role in this is to pledge the tax increment. And then it comes back to you for a vote March 24th. So that's the project. That's the timetable. You have an ordinance before you, simply introducing it, not asking for a vote today. And I'll turn the floor over to Lisa Lee on the Zoom.
Hi, Lisa.
Thank, hi. Thank you, Corey, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Lisa Lee, and I'm with Ice Miller, serving as bond counsel to the county on this project. Corey took about a third of my thunder by going through the procedural timetable to let you know all the various bodies that will have to approve this before it comes back to the council for the final approval. And that is a thumbs up or thumbs down approval, regardless of what the Economic Development Commission would decide to recommend. The council can take their own action as they see fit. This is an expansion of the 2014 original Boarshead Project. It is exciting to see another 126 million in investment in Henry County, another 120 jobs in this area. So what you have in front of you is what we consider the bond ordinance. And basically, this is a parameters ordinance. This is what we normally do when we bring things to the legislative body. So it's a very short ordinance, but you'll see in section five of page three if you want to. And I'm happy to answer any questions. But we have a maximum issuance amount here of $18,800,000, 0% interest. The company is buying the bonds. So there's no third-party purchaser for the county to consider in this. The max term expiration would be February 1 of 2039. So this actually follows the 2014 bonds, the 25-year term from 2014. And so it expires when this TIF area expires in 2039. When Corey mentioned the self-sufficient project, it's basically because the TIF generated by the expansion is the only TIF and the only funds that are actually pledged to repay these bonds. And actually, only 75% of the expansion TIF generated is pledged to repay these bonds. So what that means is 25% of the TIF generated will go to the county redevelopment commission and can be used on capital projects in serving or benefiting the overall economic development area. So that, that is a win for the county and the redevelopment commission to continue other, spurring other projects in those areas. It also means that the, the new bonds will not benefit from any kind of excess tax increment or TIF generated by the original 2014 project. So this project truly has to stand on its own. And if those TIF revenues are not sufficient, as Corey mentioned, that bondholder, which is the company, just does not receive 100% of that debt service payment. So they are solely bearing the risk that they don't build what they say they're going to build. They don't build it on, in the timeframe they say they're going to build it, or it doesn't assess at the assessed level, assessment level that they anticipated and that the TIF bonds were estimated on. So it is fully a self-fulfilling project in that sense. As Corey mentioned, we're not asking for action today. We just wanted to introduce this ordinance. We wanted to answer questions. We wanted to introduce the process. And again, there will be a public hearing. There will be public notice of that public hearing of the Economic Development Commission. And then the redevelopment commission will pledge, will have to take action to pledge the TIF to the, repay the bonds. So that's really where we are, and I'm, I'm happy to answer questions. I know Jason Simler of Baker Tilly is in the audience and could discuss the numbers more fully, if you choose to do that. But that's basically the legal process.
Thank you, Lisa. Questions from council? Going, going. We have Jason and Attorney Millican here in addition to Lisa and Corey. Questions for any of these gentlemen or lady? Refresh my memory. This does not have an abatement attached to it. That's what I hear most often from the community.
So the question was, is there an abatement tied to this project? There is not. There is an abatement on previous projects, but on this specific proposed investment, there is not an abatement.
Thank you, that was my recollection. I just wanted the public to hear that.
Out of curiosity, why not? Can you even answer that?
So preliminary negotiations on this began last fall, and the request from the company's representative did not include an abatement. It did include much greater than 75% of the TIF. And in consultation with Mr. Mallico, we basically countered and said, we think, we think a, a bond sized on 75% is more appropriate, and we would feel more comfortable in requesting approval from the county elected officials on that type of incentive.
Thank you.
So Mr. Mallico and Mrs. Steffendell, they serve on that, what is it called? TIF? No, what is it called?
It was an, an abatement committee.
Abatement, thank you.
And I specifically met with Mr. Mallico individually because he also serves on the county redevelopment commission.
Okay, and this TIF district, is this the industrial park region TIF district?
So the industrial park has its own allocation area. Allocation area is another term for TIF district. In 2014, when we were working to attract Boarshead in the initial investment, we, we created or carved out a new allocation area, and we named it creatively, the County Road 400 South Allocation Area. So this invest this investment is inside the County Road 400 South Allocation Area in the geography known as the industrial park. But if we're talking TIF language, it's two different allocation areas.
Thank you, sir. Other questions for the three gentlemen and one lady that's on Zoom? Lisa? Questions? You, did I hear you say 120 new jobs anticipated by 2024? So in your estimation and your years here as EDC director, would you consider this a significant project for economic development in Henry County?
Very significant.
Rivaling what?
I'm sorry?
What, rivaling what in the past? The original Boarshead TS Tech, or is it just on its own very significant?
So if you, if you take the company's name away from it and you look at the project specs, what do I mean by that? 136,000 square foot building, 120 new jobs, and 126 million dollar building. If we, if this was an attraction project on an unnamed company, we'd be ecstatic. I'd be asking you all to, you know, reappoint the Economic Development Commission because we'd want to be prepared to respond to that. Now, add Boarshead to it. We have an existing company looking to expand. It's tremendous. Because they have choices.
Did I hear in another forum that they closed a Michigan plant and they had other places they could have considered for this expansion and for
That was in regard, that was in regard to the 2016 project, which is the distribution facility. They no more opened the original processing facility. And then I was having conversations with their executives out of Sarasota that they were interested in building a distribution facility because the one in Holland, Michigan was no longer available to them.
Peggy, you have a question?
This is for you, Lisa. I, I may have misunderstood, and if I did, I apologize. Did you mention that the TIF area that, that was originally there was due to expire? Did I misunderstand that?
No, what, what Corey said was that we carved out in 2014, we carved out the, basically the footprint of the Boarshead Project and the Boarshead property that they were going to own and made it its own TIF area with its own 25-year expiration date. So what I, what I was saying is that these bonds were not carving anything out. They're They're staying within the same footprint of that Boars, of that County Road 400 South Allocation Area that expires in 2039. So we're not doing anything special to take this parcel or this piece expansion out of this TIF area to give it another 25-year life. It has to stay within the expiration of 2039. So you're getting the benefit of, one, only pledging 75% of the expansion, and two, not giving it a whole new area life, but will expire in 2039.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. I do want to say, I think this is absolutely tremendous for Henry County. I mean, since Boarshead came, it has been nothing but go-go-go. And I, I think it's amazing. And I think of the things we are trying to do in this county, this is probably number one. This, this is a need, not a want. This is a need, and I think it's marvelous.
I was just going to say, dovetailing on what Peggy said, they've been a very good community supporter of various aspects of the community. They've given richly in addition to employment.
Good afternoon. I'm Jim Milliken, counsel for the County Redevelopment Commission, and just wanted to follow up on what, on a couple of words that Corey just said. Essentially, he said, they, Boarshead, had options. Boarshead is a big outfit. Over 100 years old, still family-owned, multiple locations across the United States. Getting them here in 2014 has been a wonderful thing for our community. They didn't have to pick Henry County for their distribution center. They didn't have to pick Henry County for the new process that, that they're doing across the road in the, and having bought the spec building that the RDC built. They didn't have to locate this additional project in Henry County. And I think it says a lot of good things about what's going on in Henry County that they selected Henry County as the place to, to make this investment. And it reflects on, on the city, the county government, and how they can work with us and we can work with them. Just want to, want you to appreciate that, the opportunity that we have. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. There's been a great working relationship since they moved here between Boarshead and the county and the city, for sure. It's been a two-way street. And Corey has some final words.
Well, I just wanted to remind that if the council's still interested, Lisa is willing to talk about the food and beverage language that is moving its way through the Indiana Legislature and how that might impact Henry County. But I don't want to, I don't want to cut off conversation about the Boarshead project.
Did everyone on the council get the 2020-02-04-03 ordinance? If not, make sure you asked Debbie for a copy. But you should have, you should have received it. Okay, and I did too. Wanted to make sure of that. I think you're talking about Senate Bill 390, which I have shared with the council. Possible concern. I contacted Representative Saunders earlier this week, and he said it's been moved to House Ways and Means in House Bill 1002. So any updates would be great, Lisa, because I know you work in Indy and work closely with lobbyists and legislators. Do you know the current and the effect it might have on food and beverage in those handful of counties and towns and cities that have it?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Legislative season is always a fun one here in Indianapolis and around the state, because obviously it impacts everybody. Yeah, you're correct in that it started out in Senate Bill 390 and is now in House Bill 1002. And basically, what it does is it puts a, an expiration date on innkeeper's tax and food and beverage tax to the later of January 1 of 2042, which is still not quite 20 years, or the final maturity of bonds that are outstanding as of March 15 of 2022. This is the same, not to belabor and get too in detail, but this is really the same procedure that the legislature used to finally put expiration dates on what they called legacy TIF areas. So TIF areas that were created before '94 did not have an expiration date. So they could have gone on in perpetuity. So what they did was, instead of just cutting them off, they, they gave an opportunity for redevelopment commissions to issue bonds by a certain date. That date was July 1 of that legislative year in order to take advantage of a final 25 years of, of the TIF from that legacy area. So it's kind of the same thing that they're doing here. However, the March 15 date is, is just really not, it's not doable because there's various things in the food and beverage statute that, that we would want to take advantage of, a 30-day statute of limitation. So you couldn't even get bonds issued at this point by March 15 of '22. I did some digging and found out that this language came from a lobbyist that works for the city of Bloomington and that Bloomington wanted this March 15 date specifically. I've asked our lobbyist to look into whether or not they could get the section that applies to Henry County to at least say July 1 of 2022 so that the county would actually have the option of making a determination as to whether or not you wanted to issue bonds that go out a certain amount of time in order to keep that food and beverage tax revenue source available to the county. If we can't get it changed to July 1, it doesn't mean that you can't issue future bonds. It just means that your food and beverage tax will expire on January 1 of 2042. So any bonds that would be issued to fund projects under that statute would have to mature no later than January 1 of 2042. So you'd have about 18, 19 years that you could amortize debt over. And Jason might be able to talk a little bit more to that. But it's not an absolute cutoff. But it does, it will cut off your ability to expand the life of that tax for approximately 25 years from, from this year, which you could do if we could issue bonds by July 1.
Lisa, I have a clarifying question. Since we already have bonds in place, would it go to 2042? Or would it go to just the 2034, which I think is, is it 34 or 30? I can't remember off the top of my head. 34, 35, where our bonds actually mature? So-
No, it actually, it expires the later of the two dates. So I didn't pull up your outstanding food and beverage bonds, but I suspect that they, and Jason might know, I suspect they mature prior to January, January 1 of 2042. So this would say that your expiration is the later of those two dates. So it probably would mean January 1 of 2042.
Lisa, who's your lobbyist working this bill?
Well, I don't say that we have lobbyists that are actually working this bill, but we have Lisa Dietrich and Kip too. One is a Republican lobbyist, one is a Democrat lobbyist that are following this bill. And so they are the ones that, that I have asked if they could find out if there's any possibility that we could get that one date changed for that one time to July 1 of 2022. And I can actually, absolutely, I can also reach out to Representative Saunders on that particular question as well.
Am I not, am I correct in saying that an exception to this was written in for the Donut Counties that are currently supporting and paying off Lucas Oil Stadium with their food and beverage as well as French Lick?
I do know that there is a French Lick that goes, it goes later. I don't know about an exception. I think it goes to 2044. But honestly, I'm, I'm not sure there's an exception in here for the Donut Counties, but I will certainly look at that, and I will get back to Joel on that question.
Thank you, Lisa. I did read that there was an exception or an extension of those counties because they couldn't pay off Lucas Oil with, at those revenues. And Corey may have some information, but that's what I read.
Well, if they're, yeah, I would, I would suspect those bonds go beyond 2042. So that would, because they have to be a longer amortization. But yeah, I will, I will look into that, and I'll let Joel and Corey know what I find out.
Thank you.
Yeah, I try to help out. I want to talk about the politics of it for a moment. Senator Rats voted for it. Senator Lysing voted for it, and Senator Gaskell voted for it. That's a Henry County delegation in some form or fashion. The food and beverage revenue here in Henry County is a tremendous tool. A tremendous tool to invest in quality-of-life projects. And we just happened to be going through a food and beverage project funding round. And the one thing that I want to say about those presentations was the enthusiasm for a wide array of projects across our community. They're not all going to get funded. There's no way. But the enthusiasm of people from all corners of our county, all backgrounds, putting their time and effort into a, into a project that's passionate to them to come in and look for an investment, a public-private investment, because we're, we're asking them to raise funds, right? It's a tremendous tool. Unless I misread the voting records, the Senate delegation representing Henry County, Indiana voted for this bill. It's a bad bill. Thanks.
Any questions about Corey's opinion? I really try to stay clear of politics. I-
I concur.
I have. I encourage others too. That's why I shared it with him. While Jason's here, and he brought up the subject of food and beverage, when I spoke with you and Paige this week, I asked, was the document that you shared relating to potential, the option of bonding against the food and beverage that you shared on August 4 of 2021, was it still valid data? I believe, correct me if I'm misrepresenting what was said, you thought perhaps not because of the steadily increasing interest rates, that's not a political statement, it's reality, since August 4, 2021. Because that's going to lead me to ask, because it's in my notes at the end, but it's relevant right now, ask if they want Baker Tilly to do an update, given the data shared in August. May not be applicable in February, March of 2022. Questions for Jason?
Should we wait and see what happens with this March 15 date before we spend money on bonds if we can't? Because if I understood all this correctly, if they, at this point, we can't bond if they pass this bill as it stands. We could. Just shorter maturity date, okay. Which will affect the amount that we could bond?
Right.
Okay. Yeah. So then, I'd say we probably need to update those numbers. We need that in a form of a motion.
Please.
I move that we ask Baker Tilly to update our borrowing power on the food and beverage monies.
Second?
It's been moved in second. Any other discussion? All those in favor of asking Baker Tilly to update the August 4 bonding document that they shared, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's been passed. Thank you, Jason. You have a directive to please do so. Next on the agenda is ordinance 2022-4. An ordinance authorizes the expenditure of Corona local fiscal recovery funds for premium pay. I believe everything relating to that has been shared either by myself, Debbie, or Counselor Harvey. So open it up for questions if you have any.
I have a question. This document here says that current employees... I was looking for some of the changes that I thought had come out of the last meeting. It says here, still a total of 600,000 for essential pay. I thought that had been raised to 750,000.
Well, if you look at the, the Exhibit A that we received today from Kenan on the spending does say 750,000.
For the digitizing. Digitizing of records. The premium pay is still at 600,000 total, up to. And then we added $167,000 for the HVAC at the Justice Center.
So the, the changes that came out of the last meeting-
It was just the change of the, adding 911, yes.
And that's still absorbed by that 600,000?
Yeah.
And, okay. And the higher amount for other employees of 1750 is all absorbed in that 600,000?
Yeah, because as all the department heads were going through, and Debbie, you can correct me if I'm wrong, there is not as many as was, was expected or suspected that would qualify.
Okay.
Is that correct, Debbie?
So, and, and does this 600,000, did we figure in the perf and social security, Medicare taxes to make sure too?
Yes.
Okay.
Dovetailing on what Chad just asked, Debbie. Do you come up with a round, a round figure of current number of employees which you set? Okay. Do you feel fairly confident with what you have, the trending of what you have in the number of departments that have not responded, that 600,000 would fall within that 600,000 with the, I think, 19%? Okay, okay. Other questions or comments?
Yeah.
It's a lot of documents.
It is. This is not meant towards anybody in our county. Obviously, the ARP comes from the federal government, but, and I support paying our first responders this hazard pay, but I'm concerned that we had county employees who were public-facing during the pandemic in Jenny's office. Renee and Nancy had to, you know, every day, had to deal with the public. And they, they're not going to benefit from this. And I'm not saying we-
They're not what?
They're not going to benefit from this, right?
Yeah, they are. 1750.
Okay.
And public health. Public health, polls, road deputies.
Right. Thank you for the clarification. I understand they get part of it, but... And it's not that I oppose giving it to the first responders. I'm absolutely happy to support that. But I just, it feels unfair. That's no one's fault here in this room.
So, I mean-
It's a federal government thing. I just think it's unfair.
Are you suggesting that we just give everybody 5,000 and 5,000?
No, I'm not. I just-
I mean, I don't, I don't know, you know, the committee has gone through this, and I don't, I honestly don't know where to cut it off. I honestly don't. I mean, originally, it would start out as 1,000. Everybody else got 1,000, and we increased that the last time to 1750.
I'm not questioning anyone's decision-making in this room, and I mean that. I'm saying, I just, there are employees who also had to deal with the public every day. I'm saying, I just, there are employees who also had to deal with the public every day who do not benefit as much as other employees, with the caveat that I support this.
And Kennon, you can correct me if I'm wrong, the language in the ARP, and you can, you quote that more than I do, as far as words.
Yeah.
You're talking about the intent of the final guidelines from the U.S. Treasury? Did you have a specific question relating to?
As far as why?
Just like you were telling me on the phone yesterday, that the real heart of the law was to go to these first responders, right? And you list, you had.
As I read the interim and the final rules, it seems like the, the emphasis was on those who had direct communication access materials. And it was for healthcare workers, law enforcement. They did kind of tier it as most susceptible to exposure without having any options in their job to do otherwise to the COVID-19. That was kind of in a nutshell.
Right.
The intent of Congress, as was reiterated by the U.S. Treasury, who was asked to give guidelines and, and advice to the, those that are getting the funds. My only question, I guess a summary, Susan and I, who serve on that, did not attend the March 9th meeting, I believe.
Susan was at that meeting. You were at the meeting. Oh, that's right. I'm so sorry. I thought you were. I apologize.
I guess my question is, can you in a nutshell say what changes were made? Because we passed an ordinance last month.
For $1,000, yes.
Okay, that was $1,000 to two categories that didn't get 1750 and 5,005. Is that correct? And what other changes were made?
The seven, the ever, the 5,005, Joel, you were at that meeting, right? Police, Poles, police officers, first responders. Obviously, our Henry County EMS are not getting any because they're all part-time. 911, because their job class is the same as their Poles, is the same as the others. So that's why they, which came before us, and that's why they went to the 5,005.
So the justification for that was not so much the, the federal guidelines, it was because of the Personnel Manual and Poles and with the job classification. That was the rationale for that, okay.
Right. And then, yes, we did increase the others to 1750.
Okay.
So Joel, do we feel legally bound to keep the Poles equal in this instance for this set of money as well?
That was one of the discussion points.
Which is why we.
Clearly had less exposure to the public.
Which is why we moved it forward. It was the, yeah, we discussed it with Joel in that meeting.
I would say from my interpretation and understanding of the guidelines, there are some categories of people that had no choice but direct exposure on a daily basis. EMS had no choice. They didn't do a rapid COVID test before they, you know, put a tourniquet on somebody who was bleeding. They took that risk. Same with law enforcement, the same with the pandemic within the correctional facility. But I do understand, since we mentioned Pole as a job category, and we do follow Wagner, Irwin, Shealy, and the Personnel Manual, it's kind of conflicting, but I understand why you made that decision. I, I don't know if I completely agree with it because I'm not sure it goes with the intent of Congress, but I also know we're here to uphold the Personnel Manual and agreements that we've made with our employees. So it's kind of a catch-22. Any other changes? Because I interrupted you. Everybody went to 1750 except those categories that you mentioned, which are getting 385 hours at $13, which is 5,000 and $5,000.
Yeah, whatever the 300 works out to the 1750.
And Health Department fell in that category.
Falls in the 5,000.
They had no choice. They were interacting, giving tests, that kind of thing. Okay. Understood.
Police, Sheriff's Department, Public Health, and Dispatch fall under the Poles.
Dispatches, 911 or EMS?
911.
And EMS was?
Henry County EMS doesn't, because all of them were, are part-time, and Mandy and Lucas did not work as full-time during that timeframe. So those 10 people that we calculated for get nothing.
I have to admit, my mind doesn't work as well as it did 13 months ago. I'm still a long-hauler. I believe we said it had to be current employees, not part-time. Because of NACO and the, the things you and I have tuned into, not elected officials, at least currently, because of the State Board of Account put out a document saying you can't change without an ordinance. So I guess it's possible if we want to do that, or we could wait until 2023 in which it would be legal to do that, less hoops to do that. Joel, correct me if I'm off-base.
You can't change an elected official's compensation in the year.
Without going through some legal hoops. Or you would recommend against it?
You can't do it.
Okay. Well, that's what NACO was saying, and there were some people on the line from different organizations and counties. Okay. So that's a decision.
According to NACO, elected officials cannot get the.
They stressed that five times in that webinar. So, and the state of Indiana, the Board of Accounts put out a document emphasizing that. Be careful where you tread. That's up to the ARP Committee. I'm just asking questions and trying to stay legal and trying to meet the intent of legislation. Any other changes?
And, and as we're going through the employees, there's many that are not getting the full 1750. They're getting it prorated because they were offered the areas that we allowed to calculate. Or not at all. Yeah, some are not getting it at all.
I wanted to make a comment in response to Betsy. I think your sentiment is true that it's not fair. I think there's no way to make it fair. You know what I mean? When you stand with a bucket of money and start passing it out, there's no way to satisfy, and none is ever enough, which has been the struggle of the committee from the beginning. We thought about doing nothing because no one would ever.
How many months have we been talking about premium pay? Since we formed the committee? And that's been?
And even now, we sit here at a point where, you know, some department, you know, is getting money because of the same job classification, same amount as the Health Department, same, you know, our EMS workers aren't getting anything because they were part-time. There's, there's no way in my mind to make it fair. It's unfortunate.
I agree, and I'm not questioning the decisions that have been made. I just, I've had people reach out to me. More than most issues generally.
We get phone calls every day.
I know, I'm sure you do. And so part of my sentiment is my own, but also conveying.
And if somebody has an idea as to how to make it fair?
Right. I get it. I just.
I have an idea.
I guess since I wasn't on the committee, I would only ask, in my mind, I understand it seems like, and this is one of the things that I pushed for when we did the stipend, was to give the part-time something, because.
According to the ARP, part-time is not.
But now, but, but now that we are under the $10 million, we can absorb the money.
But none of that money has not been appropriated to lost revenue yet.
I'm understanding, but we could absorb any amount of dollars we wanted and shift it. My, my problem, my concern, and I will just put it out there, is we had part-time jailers over here dealing with outbreaks.
Understand.
We had part-time Health Department people on the front lines.
Understand.
Who literally were risking their lives in the middle of this and got zero.
Nobody disagreed, nobody is disagreeing with you.
There are ways to have done that, but.
But we have to wait until we bring it into lost revenue.
By bringing it in, which we already have.
There is a process, correct.
My understanding is we have number, we, we don't even need the numbers anymore since we're under 10 million. We could bring it all into the general fund.
I know. We haven't done it yet.
And so that's, I'm just saying, I think that in my mind, as, you're right. I think you guys could, you guys could meet for the next 10 years and not come up with a perfect solution. But I think that's the one big miss that I see in this.
Well, and right now, we're just following guidelines because we haven't taken it all into lost revenue. We're following, because we haven't done that, we must follow the ARP guidelines. So part-time was not included. Doesn't mean that they won't be at all. But right now, following the guidelines is where we're at.
I'm gonna, go ahead.
No, you go ahead. I'm.
I was just gonna continue to follow Chad's train of thought and play devil's advocate. Theoretically, we could reduce the amount that we are giving to full-time employees by, say, 15% and earmark that money for when it comes in to be distributed among part-time
I think the commissioners would, it would have to go back. The commissioners would have to change that in our ordinance before you guys could change any, we would have to approve it in the, Joel, am I correct?
Yeah.
We would have to approve it first.
We would have to, I understand. I was just saying theoretically, we could.
It would have to go back through the same process.
Right. How much money would that free up?
I was going to say, the only fair way is when Jason, who's left from Baker Tilly, first talked about, after the interim rules came out, he spoke to us at a meeting in June. He said, "Most of the counties that we deal with, Baker Tilly, which is significance, they're not touching essential pay with a 10-foot pole because they know it will be so controversial and disruptive to staff morale. We bit the bullet saying they deserve it, and it's, it's allowed by law. And we found out it's been somewhat contentious. We knew that, and we tried to make the least amount as possible." And it's hard to be fair when you're having to follow federal guidelines, because if you really read the whole 450 pages, you'll say, "That's not fair. That's not fair. I disagree with that. This is dumb," et cetera. But when's your next meeting? Two weeks from Wednesday?
It's the second and the fourth Wednesday at 2:00.
Okay.
So what, at March 9th, I think, at 2:00?
Susan sits on it. She has opinions relating to part-time. Duly note what Chad said, and we'll bring it to the committee.
Yeah, absolutely.
And we'll do whatever the guidelines are at the time. But I think everybody should have input into it. And so we thank you for the work you've done, because I know you've done a lot of work.
I don't think we've restricted anybody.
A lot of work, and the seven members on the committee have done a lot of research, a lot of work, a lot of soul-searching. And there's a book I read one time, says the root of all evil, the love of money is the root of all evil. Let me get it correct. And that's just human nature.
And I absolutely understand why there's some people that are upset.
I do too.
I wish, I knew that there was a magic pill to, to do, to make everybody happy, and we're just not going to be able to do it.
My, my hope is we can disagree without becoming disagreeable. And that's my hope for the council and the commissioners and humankind. Anything else relating to, we have on the floor, you have what I forwarded to you from Joel. We've got an ordinance 2022-4. See what order we're looking at. We're looking at 2022-4. I don't know if I need to read any of this or not. Some things have been amended from what we approved and voted upon at the January meeting. It looks to me like most of that relates to boosting the $1,000 up to 1750 and adding 911 to the 5,005 category. Those who took voluntary furlough, that's prorated, that hasn't changed. 600,000 is still the maximum, and I heard today that that includes fringe benefits of rough, you know, what we're required to, to take out, or perf and whatnot. 19% is what I heard Chad say. Anything else that I need to read aloud, Joel?
I think that's it. I mean, you have previously enacted ordinance approving premium pay, so I guess legally speaking, if you were not approved this one, the other ordinance is still out there.
That's the worst case, and.
Yeah, so this one's intended to supersede previously adopted.
And I need to read something else that adds the, like the, the amount that the DLZ is.
$750,000, it is the $750,000 for the, up to $750,000 for digitizing, the $167,000 for the HVAC work over here, or 170, excuse me, $170,000 for that, and.
That's in a separate that I sent from Joel.
That's a separate approval you guys have to do as a motion. That's just approving what the commissioners have done for the expenditure plan. This requires a separate ordinance because it deals with salaries.
Yeah, it's one I, I got from Joel this afternoon. I sent it out to you about an hour and a half prior to this meeting. You may have not seen it, and it is what it is. But if you need a copy, it's being passed out. But the difference is from what we approved last month has been articulated.
Mm-hmm, yep.
And if there's any questions, Bobby's here to answer them or to reiterate, but basically there's been a few additions. I did have one question, Debbie or Bobby. I heard yesterday that the quote came in for the digitizing on one of the major departments as far less, so is the 750 still? Is the 750 a little high or?
We will get, because we don't know what Steve's, we don't know your final numbers yet, do we? Yeah. Yeah. Because we're including Steve in that, so we will update at the next ARP meeting.
You're, you've got a buffer in there then?
We have a buffer.
Okay.
Yeah, that includes Surveyor. And we just, we know, we just haven't calculated the number of pages, the number of books based upon that price. We know the section corners is 203,000 for the section corners. We just don't know what the others are yet.
And that's digitizing records like many counties have already done, and we're kind of behind in that.
Anything that's not used, obviously, could, is going to go back into the ARP fund. You know, we'll reapprove.
Debbie or Bobby, what, what departments are, that you know of currently are being earmarked for the 750 to digitize?
Commissioners, Council, Auditor, and Surveyor.
Again, I didn't hear the first two.
Commissioners, Council, Auditor, and Surveyor.
Okay. Are there others with needs, or is that the ones that have spoken up that they need?
Everybody else is.
That's the prioritize, those are, okay. Any other questions? If, if not, I'll entertain a motion, and there's discussion after the, if it is moved and seconded, there's discussion after that too. This is ordinance 2022-4. I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve.
It's been moved?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Okay. You got the, you got the ayes and nays, Debbie?
I voted against.
There was a nay. Susan voted nay. Okay. Okay. Glad, glad we went over that. It passes. Thank you. Is there anything else, Joel, that needed to be passed legally on this?
Yeah, I think, I mean, sort of kind of dealing with ARP money, the commissioners last night approved an ordinance that amended the written fiscal plan for expenditure to include, I believe, the items we talked about, which would be the digitizing and the repairs to the Justice Center HVAC. I believe those are the only two, is that right? And so you would need to approve those expenditures too, but you could just do that by a voice vote.
Okay. Now, was DLZ, refresh my memory, was that in Januaries?
That was.
That was in January. So council, the new added to what we approved in January to the commissioners' ordinance was 170,000 for the HVAC for the Justice Center and 750,000 for digitizing records stated here. Board of Commissioners, County Council, County Auditor, and County Surveyor. And it's got a buffer in it from what I hear. So if you add everything on that Exhibit A page that was shared, it comes to slightly under 3 million out of the 4.65 trunks that we got last May. We anticipate getting that same amount again in May of 2022. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Oh, we didn't?
Make a motion to approve.
Did I mention I was a long-hauler? The synapses aren't quite 100% yet, so. That's right, we have it on this one. I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
It moved. I hear a second.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion other than what I glossed over about?
I would only reiterate that I would challenge the two members of our committee that are on the ARPA committee to start trying to refine the lost revenue decision, because with all of the moving parts we've had this year, with the continued expenditures, and expecting potential bad revenue streams in the near future, we need, I mean, we've spent the majority, you know, we've spent more than two-thirds of the first chunk of money. We need to make sure that we're also safeguarding what, part of what we're supposed to be doing, the fiscal, you know, body of the county is to safeguarding the county's future fiscal stability. So I would challenge you two members to make sure that gets, be brought up pretty directly.
Point taken. Susan, you helped me with my memory. I kind of wish Bobby was in here, so she would be a third to hear it, but well-taken. Point well-taken. Thank you, Chad. It's been moved and seconded. Did we, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Motion passed. Number eight, ordinance 2022-5, an ordinance authorizing transfer of funds within the budget of the Henry County Quarter. I think that dovetails off from the conversation we had back in December. Any questions, or I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on ordinance number 2022-005? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Motion passes. Number nine, probation department, retiring of Rachel Hightower, sick pay payout of $4,359.53. She leaves the county after 23 years of service, with 19 of those within the probation department, providing diligent service to the whole department of the Henry County probation staff and members. Rachel meets the criteria of retiree benefits and sick time as she has met the 28 years and more of continuous service with Henry County. Upon termination, she has afforded the following accrual time that will be paid on her on her last day of March 11th, 2022. And that breakdown is on the sheet that should have been given. And the total amount is $4,359.53. And if she's listening, we thank her for 23 years of service, and usually there is a retirement party. So stay tuned if that is released by the HR department. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
It's been moved?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion passed. Number 10, I believe I forwarded this in WS2, appointment to the Knightstown Public Library Board of Mary Jo Pretty. Counsel, I think I forwarded this to you, the purposes letter informing Henry County Council that I would like to continue to be on the library board in Knightstown. My name is Mary Jo Pretty. I was actually born in Knightstown, I've been a resident here since. I am a Knightstown High School grad and a Purdue University grad, go Boilers, majored in English and Speech Education. I have a master's degree from Ball State with a major in education. I taught three years of junior high at Cambridge City, 26 years at Knightstown High School. I am retired now and read books from the library constantly. I have had a library card at the Knightstown Public Library since I earned, I first learned to read. I would appreciate being reappointed to the library board in Knightstown. Do I have a motion?
I moved.
Okay, moved by Harold? Do I have a, I have a second from Chad. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Appointment to the Southwest Ambulance Board. This is also located in Knightstown. They request a volunteer from the Henry County Council.
I'll do it.
Thank you, Kyle, from Knightstown. It just seems appropriate. You have the least distance to travel for this. All in favor of Kyle being appointed from the council as a representative on the Southwest Ambulance Board, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Oh, you dare.
I don't think we have the motion to move. I think Kyle agrees.
I'll make the motion, we appoint Kyle.
Yes, thank you. That's why, one of the reasons you're here, to keep me straight.
I move to appoint Kyle to the Southwest Ambulance Board.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of Kyle Allen being appointed as a Henry County Council member of the Southwest Ambulance Board, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Oh, thank you for not opposing that. Passes. It'll take a month or two. Let's see, number, Henry County Health Department, $136,226 for additional appropriations. It looks to me like, and Angela's here, it's for payment of compensatory hours, 370 hours, 25 an hour, filling open position full-time, filling open position full-time, 52 council-approved, additional 18 is being requested to cover part-time positions, RIN, social security, per, 5975 is listed as council-approved on the last 2022 worksheet, an additional 2,025 is being requested to cover mileage. Board of Health approved six-month lease of property located at 205 South 12th Street, Newcastle, for safe-at-home, 650 a month, total 3,900. The remaining 1,100 is to be paid for PPE storage, for a total of $136,226. Any discussion before I entertain a motion?
I will only say that I am abstaining from this vote because I actually own that property, so.
Understood.
I'm abstaining from this vote.
Understood, and thank you for making that noted. Any other discussion, or otherwise I would entertain a motion? Do I have a motion to, this 136,226?
So moved.
It moved?
Second.
It moved and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Angela, it's been approved. Thank you for the work the Health Department has done through the last almost two years of tumultuousness that I have personally witnessed. Thank you, thank you, and thank you. Henry County Sheriff's Department. First, we have two, one's an additional appropriation, one's a transfer of funds. The first one is $205,000 for outside inmate housing through March 2022. I think, if I remember right, discussion prior to this meeting, there were some questions about the impact on our safety lit. Is there any discussion before I entertain a motion?
Just so you know, there's only a balance right now of $37,000, right? $37?
So I'd leave only 32 in safety lit?
$77,000, but in current time, there's what, cash balance?
And as I said earlier today, we budgeted the majority of the expected lit fund for this year.
And we lost $1,000.
Yeah, and we lost some.
Do you remember what we left unbudgeted? I don't remember.
It was maybe a little over $100,000. So we did carry over about $174,000, if I read the financial status correctly. But in my best educated numbers guess, this will pretty much wipe out that account, and we have nothing left for the rest of the year in that account. So, which brings up a question that I have for Debbie, and I apologize, I tried to get over here earlier today, but my work, my day job got in the way. With these additional funds that we're anticipating for potential inmates from outside of the county once the jail opens here in a few months, I think we need to start having a serious discussion about what options we have to that. Is there a way we can utilize some of those funds to help build back up the lit fund by shifting some things? I think we need to understand, and I have not apologized, I've been down with this and other work responsibilities, and so I haven't had a chance to really research that fully. But I think we need to, you know, need your help in figuring out what the best avenue is to look at those potential incoming funds that we will have, and how we can or can't utilize those.
And we can do that. And we can run this fund in the red until, just by December 31st, it has to be out of the red. I don't know, can Kyle, can you make me?
Yes.
It has to be ran out, it has to be out of the red by December 31st. We could actually, knowing that we're not going to go the whole year paying for housing, we could run this fund in the red until we're done paying, if we know exactly what our additional appropriations be. There's another option. They don't like for us to do it, but we can do it as long as we have it done in, out of the red by December 31st.
Worst-case scenario, we do have ARP, which would be permissible, but we'd rather do it outside of that. We'd rather do it their normal means.
We also have a little bit left in that, the jail operational side from the bond of the jail, but again, that's not a popular option either, because we have a lot of.
And I would want to spend that money because I think, you know, I know there's likely some less, so we're completely done.
Could be some carryover there, so it's.
You don't want to use it, so you've got that done, and they've been in it a while, so you're not going to need those dollars or something.
Are you talking about the contingency fund for the building?
No.
Well, and then there's the 20% operational, there was a fund that we left.
Right.
For that as well, that was going to be roughly $2 to $3 million when it all settled. I think it's actually came in really good, so it's, but it's our, it's our contingency fund in the fact that it was that little bit that we had left after the payments. It was those first few years of money, basically, that we had that got us started on this bond I guess I would, I would, I would want your recommendation, Debbie. I mean, I'm scared to take the 200 because it's going to totally wipe this account out. Would it be better to run it in the red, or would you prefer us going ahead and doing the transfer? I mean, you, you and Bobby are the ones that do this every day.
I think that we can, we can run it in the red because, like I said, we're not going to be still paying for housing and everything during the year. We can run it in the red to make sure that.
We wouldn't.
We don't need that much, but you're going to take 205,000 and give it an additional amount. I mean, that's, because taking the money, what if something else happens that has to be paid? Well, we could come up and use art money for it, but if we had to, can we use art money for this?
Well, we could take the art money and as lost revenue, and then we have.
Use the revenue replacement.
Yes.
So we could use that, but if we have an emergency coming up that you have to use that with funds or something, there's nothing there. You take it all.
I think based on what Debbie's, what Debbie's saying and her advice, I would actually make a motion to table this and not, not vote on it at this point.
Second.
Debbie, if we table this, that was his recommend, he made a motion. Let me follow Roberts. Is there a second? It's been first, yeah, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? I have some. How do we pay the bills to these counties? We just put everything on hold?
We're still paying it, we're just running the account in the red.
Okay.
Actually, the fund isn't in the red, the account is in the red.
Okay.
Under that fund. We'll just continue to run it in the red, which we can, if they don't like us to, but we can, as long as by the end of the year we have.
Well, what that will do for us, it will give us an accurate number. So we may be able to revisit this again in August, or July or August, when all the bills are in, and the number may come in at 260,000, it may come in at 140,000. And then we have a very accurate number that we can put as a solid plus. It doesn't take our small cushion we have there in the lit fund and completely annihilate it.
Okay, it's been moved second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye, please?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. I have one little question. You attend meetings every other month on the jail with Wygand and, yeah, every other week. Do you have an idea of what the contingency has left? Because it's been looking very good throughout this project.
As of last week, we just went under $1 million. We were trying to keep $1 million in the contingency fund, and we just dropped down below $1 million, and we're six weeks out.
This project.
From doing the ribbon cutting and open house.
Has been miraculously favorable of what other projects over the pandemic has been. They've come in budget, they've come in under budget, they have a contingency that just now fell under $1 million. You don't hear that of very many construction projects in the last two years. Almost miraculous.
Now, I don't know if that's what's been paid yet, Debbie, but as far as their spreadsheets and stuff, we've just hit under $1 million left in the contingency.
It really has been a well-managed project from beginning to end, and we are very lucky with the pandemic, with all the supply chain issues that were on track. Bobby, do we have a specific date for, you know, ribbon cutting?
The ribbon-cutting open house? It's a specific tentative date. I'll let you know next week.
Can I only make a suggestion? I've been asked by several employees that they would like to actually see it. So I don't know if the open house is going to be during the day.
It is.
Or in the evening, or if we could consider.
Four to six.
Okay.
Four to six.
Okay.
Yep.
That would be, I think it would give the employees, because there's been a few employees who've asked me.
Yep.
Would they give them an opportunity as well to go check it out?
Yep.
Harold?
And they have, have them call me if we need to set up a tour beforehand, have them call me. I'm more than welcome to answer any of their questions.
Bobby?
Yes, sir.
I have a question.
I've got about 10 minutes, because I got to pick up some flow of wild wings.
I have a question for you, and then Peggy does.
Okay.
I recall sitting with Jay, and he was working on a grant, but I can't recall what it was. Could you know what the grant is? He was trying to get a grant.
Yeah, he's working on a grant for body cameras.
Oh, that's right, yes, he's working on a grant for body cameras. Yes, I forgot about that one, yes.
He's also working for one on JCAP program. Through the foundation.
And I, yeah, I think it's, he'll need a $25,000 match or something, I don't know. Yeah, he's working on a grant for body cameras. Yes, Peggy?
I'm sorry, I heard the time, but I didn't hear the date.
It's tentatively March 30th, but that could change. That's just all tentative right now. We're just in the planning stages, so. Tentatively, the ribbon cutting is at 3:30, and the open house would be from 4 to 6. Is that 3:30? I think, three, three, 3:00 or 3:30, I can't remember. Tentatively, I think 3:00. And then the ribbon, or open house from 4 to 6, which then they will be taking tours, guided tours through the, through the facility.
Thank you.
And I'm sure if any of you need, want to have a tour, we can, beforehand, we can set it up.
Thank you, Bobby. Any other questions relating to the jail, or that Bobby, Commissioner Bobby can answer?
I've never been around so many people that are looking forward to go to jail.
It's very nice. I mean, I will say, to say that a jail is pretty, it's pretty. And it's, it's clean, it's, I mean, it really is, it's impressive if you haven't been through it. It's, it's very impressive. I went through it about a week ago.
If you really want to be impressed, take a tour of our current jail and then go to the open house, and you will be really impressed. I would highly recommend that if you've not been in both. And our current one's in a lot better shape than it was.
And every, all of you guys will be invited, obviously, to the open house and the ribbon cutting.
Thank you, Bobby.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Now I can go get my wings.
And it was under 10 minutes? Henry County Sheriff's Department Transfer Fund, $38,000 from jail officers to jail uniforms. You have the information in front of you. If there's no questions, entertain a motion. It's been moved?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, transfer of 38,000 from the count of jail officers to jail uniforms. All in favor?
Aye.
Job classification update. This would be Chad Mallico.
So really, not a whole lot to go here. We had three departments come before the job classification committee, the Highway Department, 911, and the Health Department. All three were basically just looking for directions on changes in job description, titles, and such. So there's no real action to be taken this evening. They were all, they all were sent with some pathways to get the information that we need to come back to job classification before decisions can be made on any of the three. So the only thing I would mention is we are still desperately in need of county employees to be on the job classification committee. There's what, one, two, three department heads still in the building? So please talk to your employees, because we are down two people, and we thankfully, our sheriff's office, sheriff's deputy, was able to get back into the building, so we had a quorum, just in the nick of time.
That's going to be my question.
He came from an incident, a scene, and he was able to get off just in the nick of time. So we've had four members, but that, you know, we have had issues in the past few months getting a quorum. So please, department heads, talk to your employees, because, and this may be something that we need to discuss with Joel, and considering a possible change in the current statute ordinance that governs this committee, to change the way it's, the way it's put together. If we're going to continue to have this type of a quorum issue and lack of interest, I would hate to see it do this, but we may have to change it. I mean, the whole, I mean, I, I'm really surprised. I mean, I'm kind of surprised that employees would not want to get involved in this, because it deals with how much they get paid. It deals with all their colleagues and their, you know, and it, and it, we meet during the day, you get paid to sit in here. I mean, now it's, there's really, it's, there's a, there's, I don't understand the negative, I guess. So some, somebody's going to have to tell me.
So your needs are in the county employees.
Well, the county employees are the two, but then I was getting ready to shift. We also need two citizen appointees. So anyone in the room who has ideas, you know, we've got a couple citizens left in the room, one, one. I guess you're it. We, we do need citizen appointees, they are non-voting members, but they are very, I actually sat on the committee as a citizen appointee prior to being elected. It's very, and Betsy did, it's very informative, it's good to hear outside influence in the county, what happens at other people's jobs and other people's place of employment that are not government-related. It's, it's great to have that, so anybody in the room that knows anybody interested, please have them reach out to me.
You know, I mentioned it to my wife and she looked at me kind of funny and said, I just retired, give me a break. But I did tell, I did share with her, and she is considering it. She did not hit me, I don't have my hand wrapped up like you did.
I guess I will say that we, we meet once a month, it's generally an hour, an hour and a half prior to the council meeting, depending on the schedule, and we don't meet every month. We only meet as needed, so it's probably what, eight, maybe eight times a year, give or take. I mean, we've met more often in the past, but it's six or eight times a year. So it's, it's not an enormous commitment, but it's a very important committee.
People out on YouTube, you heard the plea and the plug, please respond, be greatly appreciated. We hated to put you at the end, but I, I thought maybe there was going to be a highway update from job classification, apparently not. While you're walking down here, Joe, I'm going to thank Jenny for being here. We'd love to see more department heads, we welcome, we welcome you to give reports. And if I'd known that you weren't going to have to speak on behalf of job classification, we would have put you earlier, so we'll try better next time, but thank you.
Okay, thank you. I don't have much to report, of course, the weather's been something we've been having to deal with.
You might have to use your microphone, I'm sorry. Yeah, sorry. Only for the people at home as much as us.
It probably died over the last two hours.
We've been battling some with the weather, of course, and I've been asked questions about manpower and how we go about it and, and actually, Taylor in the GIS office had put together a map for us with the 12, we have 12 drivers in the 12 areas that each driver is responsible for when they're, of course, when they're not off. We do have some part-time help that helps us with the subdivisions and today we had, we had one in the hospital, so, you know, heart trouble. So we were a little short, so the guys share, share an area or we send another fellow out. We do have 15 trucks, large trucks that we can use, so we do have extras if we have breakdowns. So that's, and we have plenty of salt, the salt barns are being used, one for salt, one for salt sand mix.
On the way in, I noticed some of the intersections, like four-way stops have been sanded, it looks like today.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, they've been out.
Joe, I want to commend you and the department, of course, you know I live in the road, on the back road. Two things, you got my deer signs up and you guys are doing a good job out there and I know they got a lot of work to do, but they usually get the roads done pretty quick.
Yeah, they do a good job, they really do, yeah. And, and it's a good thing there's 12 of them, because if we tried to split it up, when I was in another county, we separated it by quadrants, northwest, southwest, and we'd put two drivers, one more south, one east west, and that took a lot of time to get that done. It sure did, especially when you had to go back over the major routes and do them over and over and over.
But you've gone from eight to 12.
Yeah, we have 12, we've got 12 drivers here in Henry, so, yeah, that's, they can get around on the routes a lot quicker. And the other thing is, is I've been working on our 2022 road program, I'm, I'm close. I've, I've got a preliminary map with everything that I'd went over with Dale and, and one of the crew leaders, I got to talk to another crew leader, and, but I've got a cut. I've got 14, $4.2 million on this map and that's too much, I've got to cut it to 2.7. So, so we've got some cutting to do to make it happen, so.
I took down your large map from last year, because I talked to you and you said it was forthcoming, so I wasn't being the vandal in the room, I just took it down in preparation, because I figured you were probably going to make another large one that we could post eventually.
We're, we're, we're working on it, and we're getting some of those local roads too, Harold, so, yeah, we're, we're working on it, yes, sir.
You've made the best with the funds we've had. Anything else for Joe? We, we do appreciate the work you do, given your staffing and budget limitations.
We've got some good people working for us, so, that helps.
And we thank you for your patience to be here, we're still going to shoot for being out here within two hours. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. The only thing I have, I have an ARA update, which was, I've been at 90 minutes with Eric Frye and Victoria, I call her Victoria B., because I'm not sure how to pronounce her last name, here, and I sent you a report. They spoke to us about what, what programs were being emphasized by OCR, the Office of Community and Rural Affairs that distributes federal monies, and I shared with you, there's a wastewater and drinking program, there's a stormwater improvement program up to 600,000 with a 10% local match, and there's a public facilities program up to 500,000 with a local 10% match. Of the three, probably the latter, the public facilities program, would be most applicable to some of the projects that we might consider for Henry County. I reminded you, the Reserve Officer Appreciation Gathering, at, at the gathering this Saturday at 7:00 PM. RSVP, it's not too late to land and dean, and he is on the Henry County email system. I've not attended that, but those who have said it's, it is a nice program, because the reserve officers are basically volunteers and it's, it's a good program and they appreciate elected officials showing up. I would encourage you, I've watched 24 out of the 28 food and beverage presentations. I haven't seen the last four, but I'm working, working on it. And as Corey said, there's, there's a lot of passion and a lot of preparation that went into those. So my understanding, they're going to present their recommendations. They've only cut it from 13.3 million down to 13, barely over 13 million. And Newcastle Main Street withdrew their project, so that's what takes it down to 13 million. So it's the original 32, they're down to 28. I encourage you to watch it. ARA, the other thing I wanted to mention is they had improved 20 low, middle-income households and their needs, two of those were from Spiceland the last two years. They're looking at 15 with the 250,000, that we had an 11% match that we approved, and not all those are in Newcastle. Those by law have to be completed by this October. Okay, one other note, I already said thank you to Jenny for being here. Thank you, Kyle, for stepping up on the rub, on the southwest. He has offered to help with any rubric if we'd like to make it different than the rubric they're using for food and beverage, or if we want to use the same, anyone else is welcome to volunteer for that. And anyone would like to work with me, because at the last meeting we said we'd like to have an appointment calendar, so we don't have the stumbling that we had in January with Debbie. Just go through the minutes and see what's, if anybody'd like to help, otherwise I will work with Debbie and so we know ahead of time what appointments we need to look and possibly ask for that many resume before the meeting, so we can actually act on things more expeditiously than we have. Anything from the public?
Well, I'm the public, I have a question.
Yes, I was going to ask counsel, counsel last time, go ahead.
With the food and beverage, I have not had a chance to talk to Corey or any, or Landon or anyone else on the committee, but I purposely been trying to keep arms linked to not. But have we set a timeframe as to when they're going to present to us and in the manner in which? Because I, I would just make a suggestion, because I think it's going to be a very involved process. I think it would be beneficial to have a special meeting and, and I think it should probably be an actual meeting, special meeting, so instead of a work session, so, you know, action could be taken. But I, if not, I, I could see this taking quite some time to go through. So I've just wondered if any, if, if you or, or if Landon, I think Landon chairs the committee, or if you guys have set any timeframes or if you've heard anything, just curious.
They, there was a Knightstown meeting that Ed and Susan and I attended and as I understood it, they were setting a framework for the public presentations. And they did set the deadline that they would present to us no later than our March 24th meeting. I think we do need to set something up and decide how we're going to handle that. If we want to have a special meeting, I think that's a great idea. I've, I've been trying to be neutral as well, but I've been watching the meetings and they, they're very good. I, I don't envy them for having to cut the 13 million. I did suggest to Corey, it should be nice if you cut it in half, and they laughed. So I said, how about 10 million? Because most we do, if we bond, and that's not been decided yet, because we're waiting to see what the projects are, is 4.4. So there's going to be major slashing.
That was with the old numbers, I bet it's.
Yeah, it's probably, it's less than that. That's the absolute maximum if somehow miraculously it came in with the same numbers, with nobody's. Susan, go ahead.
No, you're good. I, I feel pretty certain that they are going to give us a list of priority, prioritized projects from 1 to 33. That's the format they're going to do it.
He did mention something that they were hoping, but he said, I'm one member, just like all of us are one out of seven. He's one out of. Seven. Well, they're minus one now.
I think they're going to give us, they're going to, they have a scoring card they're using, they're going to come up with the score and they're going to rank them. That's what is, was my understanding from that meeting.
I would just definitely recommend that we hold it as a separate meeting, because I think we're going to have a lot of interest from the public.
It will be.
And I think there'll be a lot of interest, it takes some time. And I know when we originally set these meetings at 3:30, this may be the exception we need to make and have a later meeting to ensure that we can, because I think it's, like Corey and you and everyone has said, these people have poured a lot into this, you know, to, to go after this and there, there's a lot of great projects and I think they deserve their due.
Agreed.
Absolutely, not only that, but the public is deeply invested, based on the emails, some great, some not great. I've been getting, a lot of people are watching.
I've been here a long time and this is probably the best group of people and I've worked harder than most of them. I mean, they have really put a lot of work into this and we want to make sure we honor them.
I, I wholeheartedly agree, I, and I've shared with you. I'm very impressed with the preparation and the detail and the compassion, passion that the presenters conveyed in those two five-hour meetings. Two five-hour meetings, and I don't think we'll have any, any less than that if we're doing our due diligence, so. Be prepared, anything else before we adjourn?
I just want to, wait a minute, what were you doing? Oh, this is the guy that we have asked, we, I work for Governor DeSantis, he owns the GLDS and they have legislative services. He's driving on our website and legislative service, he's working on changing the law, they do not have any clue how it works with, three members. They had no idea that how the law is worked, legislative services is. They did not realize that we had to sign off on it, that we were not liable for it. Many of them don't even realize we were not liable. Governor DeSantis has worked for the GLDS, I have talked to him, I've done legislative services several times to work on it. We're all citizens, we don't make a case, I'll take the blame for it.
It took Kenan and I about 45 minutes of a meeting to completely understand what had happened, but I feel we're a lot more intelligent about it now, so.
We got educated.
No one is pointing fingers, but now I feel like I understand exactly what happened and the impact on the budget, which is really good.
Good, it's a little scary that they didn't know the impact, the ones who made the laws, but I appreciate your follow-up.
Yeah, thanks, Debbie.
Nobody thought.
I have one more to try and get the law changed the last two weeks with the, with the.
Appreciate it.
I think it was more that we didn't understand what was going on and that we thought you misappropriated money.
That's where I was coming from.
That, what I said was this way?
Thank you. We appreciate that. Any other discussion before we take a motion to adjourn?
Just want to let everybody know that tomorrow, 11 to 1, at the Newcastle Public Library is the governor's commission on health. The governor's goal is to change, create that commission to allow them to actually have more authority than what they actually do. And I think as parents, we need to be very proactive, I'm going to get political here, proactive and make sure the governor and this health commission understands that we as parents and our grandparents and our guardians have the right to make decisions for our own children. And the, the whole goal and purpose of this is to eliminate that decision-making for us. So it might be a really good event to go to, just in FYI.
I appreciate that. I was going to bring it up and I don't have it on my notes, but I have it on my calendar. It's 11 to 1 in the Newcastle, Henry County Public Library. It's a forum of listening to the public as to how basically the pandemic was handled and what the local departments of health have had to endure over the past two years. So thank you for bringing that up.
You're welcome, they want more control, so be proactive and say your piece.
11 to 1 tomorrow, have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, March 24th, if not before.